Yeah, we wrapped up 13 last time, ready to jump into 14. But we can always start with questions. If you know, I was ruminating on things over the last week, that's totally fine. So let's start with a word of prayer and I'll open it up and we'll go from there. Yahweh, we thank you for this time to once again, study your word, to join so many others over the last 2,000 years who have meditated upon these words, who have wrestled with them in the time in which they've lived. We pray for your blessing today, that we would receive the warning and receive the blessing as we read through this section. That we would be inspired, inspired to change, inspired to act, inspired to reach out and share the good news, Jesus Christ, with all those around us. Father, we pray that your spirit would guide and direct us through this study tonight. That your name would be lifted up, that our focus be zeroed in on on your Son. That we would put away all the distractions of this life, of this world, and that we would follow after him. We pray these things for your glory, in Jesus's name. Amen. Alright, so we've gotten through the dragon, the sea beast, and the earth beast, and the mark of the beast. Ready for chapter 14? Now, any questions before we start tonight? Any at all? Going once? Going twice? Alright. Oh boy, Phil, that was a fake out. He went up just a... Totally had me. I was like, ohhh. I'm like, oh, here we go. Alright, well hey, let's get into 14. So we're gonna cover the Lamb and the 144,000. We read about them in Revelation 7. They're coming back. We have the angel with the eternal gospel. We're gonna read about doom for the worshipers of the beast, and then the reapers. And then that sent me down a fun little rabbit hole, looking up the origins of the grim reaper. I'll just tell you where my research goes, that's fine. It's like, oh, that's where Luke's mind goes. So you know, it's one of those things that really, I've just kind of over the years, just become more suspect of like, hey, you know what? This figure of pop culture, like, where did that originate? Right? And you know, I am never disappointed. It is always fascinating, and you know, and just to take like the full spectrum of, you know, where where that goes. So because who's doing the research, you know, who you're reading up on, it's always good to know their backgrounds and everything else. Well, we'll get there, we'll get there, we'll get there. I'll share, I'll share what I've learned. So that's just a teaser, that's all. So alright. So chapter 14. There's another scholar, Kester, who wrote Revelation in the End of All Things, and he describes this chapter. "Here John's visions press readers to see themselves in the middle of a conflict between the powers of God and evil. The visions that unfold in this chapter provide glimpses of the outcome of the conflict, giving readers incentive to persevere in the confidence that God will not abandon the faithful or allow evil finally to triumph." So I just wanted to read that before we read the chapter, just so that it's framed in that way. Because as we flip back all the way back to 11, we already read about the seventh trumpet. We already read about Christ beginning his reign. And then, there's an interlude. So the last couple chapters, 12 and 13, it's like we're getting backstory. We're going deeper into maybe who some of the good guys are and who the bad guys are, and some of the details in between. And so here, in 14, that continues. So as some people read this, remember what we were talking about, it kind of circling back on itself as we move forward. That revelation is generally, even though some people read it as completely linear, it may not be. That we're seeing something cyclically, but then even think of that overlap, even in a spiral fashion, as you're getting deeper into it. That there is this overlap, and there is a progression, but yet, time is different. That those things are repeating, but in a different time. Same cycle, different time, different place. And maybe some of these things are happening at the same time, but in different points of the sequence. Everybody confused? Great. So either way, what we're reading is a warning, as it was a warning to the churches in Asia Minor 2,000 years ago. It's been a warning, but also that encouragement for believers around the world for the last 2,000 years. That's for us to remember, that's for us to hold on to. So as we get into 14 here. "Then I looked and behold, the Lamb was standing on Mount Zion, and with him 144,000, having his name and the name of his father written on their foreheads. And I heard a voice from heaven like the sound of many waters, and like the sound of loud thunder. And the voice which I heard was like the sound of harpess playing on their harps. And they sang a new song before the throne and before the four living creatures and the elders. And no one could learn the song except the 144,000 who had been purchased from the earth. These are the ones who have not been defiled with women, for they have kept themselves chaste. These are the ones who follow the Lamb wherever he goes. These have been purchased from among men as first fruits to God and to the Lamb. And no lie was found in their mouth; they are blameless. And I saw another angel flying in mid-heaven, having an eternal gospel to preach to those who live on the earth, and to every nation, and tribe, and tongue, and people. And he said with a loud voice, 'Fear God, and give him glory, because the hour of his judgment has come.' Worship him who made the heaven and the earth and the sea and springs of water. And another angel, a second one, followed, saying, 'Fallen, fallen is Babylon the great, she who has made all the nations drink of the wine of the passion of her immorality.' Then another angel, a third one, followed them, saying with a loud voice, 'If anyone worships the beast and his image, and receives a mark on his forehead or on his hand, he also will drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger. And he will be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels, and in the presence of the Lamb. And the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever. They have no rest, day and night, those who worship the beast and his image, and whoever receives the mark of his name. Here is the perseverance of the saints, who keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. And I heard a voice from heaven saying, 'Write: Blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on. Yes, says the Spirit, so that they may rest from their labors, for their deeds follow with them.' Then I looked, and behold, a white cloud; and sitting on the cloud was one like a son of man, having a golden crown on his head, and a sharp sickle in his hand. And another angel came out of the temple crying out with a loud voice to him who sat on the cloud, 'Put in your sickle and reap, for the hour to reap has come, because the harvest of the earth is ripe. Then he who sat on the cloud swung his sickle over the earth, and the earth was reaped. And another angel came out of the temple which is in heaven, and he also had a sharp sickle. Then another angel, the one who has power over fire, came out from the altar, and he called with a loud voice to him who had the sharp sickle, saying, 'Put in your sharp sickle and gather the clusters from the vine of the earth, because her grapes are ripe.' So the angel swung his sickle to the earth, and gathered the clusters from the vine of the earth, and threw them into the great winepress of the wrath of God. And the winepress was trodden outside the city, and blood came out from the winepress up to the horses' bridles for a distance of 200 miles." Maybe not as upbeat as what I sold it out to be, but you know, like... But, I will say, this is the difference in perspective from a church that is being persecuted, and a church that prides itself on how civilized it is. Here we are in the 21st century, and such barbarity, such bloodshed. I mean, it's completely removed from our lives. But if we were seeing, like, our loved ones, if we were experiencing that persecution firsthand, and seeing martyrdom around us, oh wait, evil doesn't win in the end. So this would be those words of comfort. It's hard for us to imagine that. But where do we put our hope? We put our hope in Jesus Christ, in the world to come. That all the suffering of this life will be a distant memory or completely forgotten. That it's in the world to come that we will have peace, and joy, and security, and all of those things. And to know that they won't be a part of it. That's part of the recipe. So, not to jump to the end there, but it definitely ended on kind of a downer. So so what are some initial observations or questions other than it not being as joyful as what I initially made it out to be? Amen? Oh, we're gonna, we'll start there. So we're gonna start with who the 144,000 are. We talked about it chapter 7, that was months ago. Literally months ago. Trying to think when we were actually in chapter 7. No, we have not. We started January of last year. So it was a couple Christmases ago. It's an exaggeration, Jim. Any other thoughts? Any?
I think you can see that spiraling here, where the angel says, if anyone worships the beast and receives its mark. But we just read in the last chapter, people had taken their...
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So yep, so we're pointing out the spiral here, even as the angel is talking about if anyone takes the mark. But we just read about all of that in the last chapter. So it's kind of that spiral effect. Oh, okay. So we have the exclusive 144,000, a literal understanding of it. So yeah, so Pentecostal, Jehovah's Witness, there's a number of those that subscribe to that. Over the last 2,000 years.
And that does or doesn't include Israel?
That does or doesn't include Israel, that's right. Oh boy. Yeah, well, we'll get into that, we'll definitely get into that. Yeah, Jackie?
So those churches who say that, where do they get that?
The plain reading of the text. Quote-unquote. John's not here to argue it. Well, and I mean, like, that's, that's the point, right, is that without context, without understanding a lot of what is understood, you know, cross-referencing with other scriptures, and you know, other things that were written that, you know, John could have been pulling from, you know, that's just it. Like, that's our lack of reverence, I say, like, for the word of God. Some people hold it as the utmost reverence to just the plain reading of the text, and I'm inspired to take it at this meaning. And some people have that understanding that, oh, I have the Holy Spirit, so however I read the text is an inspired understanding of it. And that's scary. That there is no foundation for that. There is not rooted, even in the word of God itself, for that understanding to happen. And so, but that's how all kinds of crazy understandings go, and then somebody amasses a following, because all of a sudden, you say that, hey, 144,000, and such an inspired person says, hey, and you're one of them. Oh, I'm in. I'm in, you know? So, you know, and you're just kind of marching in lockstep with whatever that person says from then on. And so, you know, it just it's how cults and stuff like that, you know, start, and they and somehow they still are around 150 years later, and so... Some of you got that one. So, yes.
A possibility.
Yeah, so is anybody under the throne or under the altar? Are they a part of the 144,000? Great question. We'll get to that. The VIPs, that's right. They got a front row seat. That's right, that's right. Alright, any others? Before we jump in here, we'll talk about the 144,000 first. Yeah, Harry? Yep, yep. Now, how many of you were with me in chapter 7? Okay, alright, okay. We'll do a little review of that. So okay, are we ready? Okay, so let me go ahead and go, let's go back to chapter 7, just for a little bit of background. And we'll read 1 through 8. Revelation 7, starting at verse 1. "After this I saw four angels standing at the four corners of the earth, holding back the four winds of the earth, so that no wind would blow on the earth, or on the sea, or on any tree. And I saw another angel ascending from the rising of the sun, having the seal of the living God. And he cried out with a loud voice to the four angels, to whom it was granted to harm the earth and the sea, saying, 'Do not harm the earth, or the sea, or the trees, until we have sealed the bond servants of our God on their foreheads.' And I heard the number of those who were sealed, 144,000, sealed from every tribe of the sons of Israel. From the tribe of Judah, 12,000 were sealed, from the tribe of Reuben, 12,000, from the tribe of Gad, 12,000, from the tribe of Asher, 12,000, from the tribe of Nahftali, 12,000, from the tribe of Manasseh, 12,000, from the tribe of Simeon, 12,000, from the tribe of Levi, 12,000, from the tribe of Issachar, 12,000, from the tribe of Zebulun, 12,000, and from the tribe of Joseph, 12,000, and from the tribe of Paul, oh, just kidding, Benjamin, 12,000 were sealed." Thanks. So so what we had talked about months ago, a year ago, can't remember, was that basically what we're looking at here, the 144,000, you take it, you know, 12 times 12 times 1,000, and you have this, kind of the holy number of 12, and 1,000, like this kind of limitless number. Okay, so this compounding is, it's this complete number of the holy ones of God. So there is a small group that takes this literally, but by and large, most scholars will take this as the whole number of God's people. Now, I would also, you might say, well, look at all the tribes listed, look at mention of the sons of Israel. Who is Israel? Everybody remember that discussion now? That's right. You get points for that one, that's good. So we put their hands up and go, I am. And that's right, that's right, because, and this is what I would point to in Pauline theology, Paul's theology, don't be confused, there wasn't a female. But anyways, so Paul's theology was that Romans 8 through 11, in his mind, the church equals Israel. Because the Gentiles have been grafted into, Romans 11 here, have been grafted into the tree of Israel. Remember that whole idea of the branches have been broken off? And you, a wild olive shoot, have been grafted into it? That's why all the promises that God had made to the patriarchs and to everybody forward, that's how they belong to us too. We have been grafted into this. Ephesians chapter 2. Okay, let's go there. Just by some of the looks. Oh, this is so good. So, because this is really identity, that's what we're talking about here. So this is what Paul understands. God didn't create multiple ways of salvation. Remember, the church, or in Paul's understanding, the gathering, the ingathering of Israel started with the Jewish people. And then, he goes throughout the diaspora, ministering, sharing this good news to the Jew first, then to the Gentile. Because he's going through and declaring this message, who is a part of the faithful remnant of God, of God's people? And we've been talking about this with Ezra and Nehemiah. That there is always this faithful remnant. But then, those doors got flung wide open for the Gentiles to come in. But these people with a pagan background, could they bring their paganism into this? Was that their identity? No, no, no longer. They had repented of those things, and had taken on the mantle of Christ. They had been grafted into Israel. Israel was their identity from that point on. Ephesians chapter 2. So we always go to verse 8, "For by grace you have been saved through faith, and that not of yourselves is a gift of God, not as a result of work, so that no one may boast. For we are his workmanship created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand, so that we would walk in them. Therefore remember, that formerly you, the Gentiles in the flesh, who are called uncircumcision by the so-called circumcision, which is performed in the flesh by human hands, remember that you were, past tense, right, you were at one time, you were at that time, separate from Christ, excluded from the commonwealth of Israel, and strangers to the covenants of promise, having no hope, and without God in the world. But, but now, in Christ Jesus, you who formerly were far off have been brought near by the blood of Christ." So all those things that we just read in verse 12, have been undone, have been reversed. You could read that. Remember that you were at that time, separate from Christ. No longer, you're no longer separate from Christ, you are in Christ. Excluded from the commonwealth of Israel? No longer. You are now a part of the commonwealth of Israel. Strangers to the covenants of promise? You are no longer strangers to those. Those are yours. That is your heritage. Having no hope, and without God in the world, we have hope. We have God in the world. This is Paul's theology here, theology for what we call the church. This is a spiritual Israel that we are talking about. There's no two, this is when we got into that whole discussion of, like, are the Jews saved some other way apart from Christ? No. It is only through the Messiah that they are saved, that any of us are saved, period. That's why Paul was passionate about this, and going to his people around the world, around the Mediterranean, sharing the good news that the Messiah has come. And that the rest of the apostles go throughout the world to share this message. They're going to pockets of Jewish people that they knew of, and starting there. So when we talk about the 144,000, this is that complete picture. When we're reading through those tribes, we're just talking through the major branches of the olive tree. So we could go to Romans 11, but does anybody have any questions on this understatement? on this understanding of it? It's a really quick rehashing of what we talked about. I mean, I think we devoted like the whole time, and we're reading a number of different places. But, you know, yeah, I think this is definitely Paul's theology, his theological perspective, that, you know, later on in Ephesians, talking about the one new man, right? Because it was not just the Jewish people who were putting their faith in Messiah, but also the Gentiles too. So, and the whole idea that, oh yeah, you're no longer a Gentile. Your identity is not wrapped up in you being non-Jewish. It's being a follower of Jesus. So... Okay? Yeah, Harry? That's right, that's right. And that's, so there's always the baker's dozen, right? So there's always twelve mentioned, but there's thirteen to choose from. Right? And remember, a half tribe is a whole tribe, so... Which one? Have to cast lots for that, just kidding, just kidding, totally kidding. But, but yeah, no, I mean, that's, and a lot of people think that Dan was left out because of idolatry, the sin of idolatry, and one of the first tribes to be just completely just disappear. After forsaking their allotment in the south, they go to the far north, and then quickly devolve into paganism and stuff, so... Yep. Tell Dan is also where one of the golden calves was placed by Jeroboam. So... Didn't have a lot going for him, so... Any other questions on just the identity of the hundred and forty-four? We're gonna go deeper into this. Okay, but that's an initial starting point. To understand that from chapter seven, when we're talking about the hundred and forty-four thousand, we're talking about believers. All believers. Not just a hundred and forty-four thousand, taking the numbers as symbolic, but as an all-encompassing number for all believers. So it would include the ones under the altar. It would include all the ones for the last two thousand years. So, verse one. "Then I looked, and behold, the Lamb was standing on Mount Zion, and with him one hundred and forty-four thousand, having his name and the name of his father written on their foreheads." So when we talk about the Lamb, we are talking about Jesus, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. When we talk about Mount Zion, this was actually the place that the temple was built. It was a rise on the northern part of the tell that Jerusalem sat on, or the city of David. Okay? And as it moves up, that is the high point, the high place that the temple was built. That is Mount Zion. Yes, yep, absolutely. Uh, so so with him, with the Lamb, is the hundred and forty-four thousand. They have his name and the name of his father written on their foreheads. So here's the interesting part. So, everybody, I hope you understand, nobody, zero, zilch nada, would have called Jesus, Jesus, when he was walking the earth. Everybody know that? Just making sure. If you didn't, there you go. So even in the Greek, the closest rendition would have been Iesus. Iesus, Iesus. Most in, within Hebrew or Aramaic, Yeshua. Yeshua. Yeshua is kind of an abbreviated for like Yahoshua, or really, when, if we would have translated Yeshua's name, it could have been Joshua. The, the name Joshua today is the equivalent of Yeshua. So, there you go. Think of all your friends that are named Josh or Joshua. And so then, Yeshua means Yahweh saves, or Yahweh is salvation, Yah is salvation. Yes? I mean, you can do it like that, there's renditions where like... Uh, but it means Yahweh is, or Yah is salvation. And then, the interesting part of this is that if you actually write that out, you have the name of the son, and you actually have the name of the father at the same time. So, so Yahweh, or Yah is salvation. So that could be what was written on their foreheads. So like, literally, Jesus's name is Yah and salvation. I mean, that's worth just, I mean, we could just stop right there. Come on. If you didn't know that before, that, that's, that's worth making you smile, right? Just, you know, like, ah, how's today going? But you know what? I, I learned something. Jesus's name really means Yahweh is salvation. Ah, that's beautiful. So, uh, so that is what is written on their foreheads. Okay? See the juxtaposition between what we were talking about last week with the mark of the beast. And here, on their foreheads, this is what they have written. So, to that, uh, from Mount, uh, so the scene is obviously a contrast to the beast of chapter thirteen, whose followers are stamped with the mark, six, 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 on their right hand or on their forehead. Uh, it's fitting that the Lamb should be standing on Mount Zion, for the sacred place had long been associated with divine deliverance. The prophet Joel foretold that those on Mount Zion would escape the great and terrible day of the Lord. The mountain in John's vision, however, according to Mounts, is not on earth, it is the heavenly Mount Zion. So for reference, we could go to Hebrews, chapter twelve, verse twenty-two. I thought this was an interesting point from Mounts. So here, the author of Hebrews is contrasting Sinai and Mount Zion, starting at verse twenty-one. "And so terrible was the sight that Moses said, 'I am full of fear and trembling; but you have come to Mount Zion, and to the city of the living God, the heavenly Jerusalem, and to myriads of angels, to the general assembly, and church of the firstborn,' which, as we were just talking about..." So that word church is gathering. That's what church means, ecclesia, uh, gathering. So, the church or gathering of the firstborn who are enrolled in heaven, and to God, the judge of all, and to the spirits of the righteous made perfect, and to Jesus, the mediator of new covenant, and to the sprinkled blood that speaks better than the blood of Abel. So the point here being the heavenly Jerusalem. So Mounts is interpreting this Mount Zion as being within the heavenly Jerusalem. Thought that was interesting. So then, also, uh, the hundred and forty-four thousand, as we talked about before, Mounts agrees, so the identity of the hundred and forty-four thousand, it's been variously interpreted. So they are better understood as the entire body of the redeemed. Chapter seven, hundred and forty-four thousand were sealed against the woes that lay ahead. Now the same number stands secure beyond that final ordeal. The repetition of the number is not to ensure an exact identification between the two groups, but to point out that not one has been lost. So think about all the stuff that's happened between chapter seven and chapter fourteen, there's still a hundred and forty-four thousand. So even for a symbolic number, within the reading of the text, nobody's been lost. Did you just ask that within the context of Revelation? Everything's cryptic! It would have been pretty clear to like John's readers, because this is the fulfillment, fulfillment of Israel. Right? So like, twelve tribes, you know, twelve thousand from each, like, oh, this is everybody. They, just in how they would have heard the numbers. So that, immediately how they would have received that, just messing with you, that's... Why is this cryptic? It's all cryptic! So, yeah. Yeah, right. Yeah, no, I, I think that's absolutely fair. You know, just within the number, I'm trying to think, because even with thousands and like legions and, you know, different things, that would have been like a complete unit. Right? And so but yeah, I think with the twelve, and the twelve and thousand, I think that, you know, they would have missed how complete that was in pointing directly to Israel. Yeah, no, absolutely. No, that's fair. Yeah, it's only cryptic because we're not that initial target audience. Yeah, no, that's completely fair. And, and, and I think, sorry, Phil, the, and even just as we've been talking about like the mark of the beast, for six hundred and sixty-six. I mean, how much did I have to talk to like establish this was Nero? But at that time, like, this was just commonplace. You know, but then, you know, you have fragment one fifteen, where it's like in Aramaic, and they actually have to spell it out, that six, six, six is Emperor Nero. So even cross-culturally, they're like, here, let me spell this one out for you. So, yeah. Ah, great question. Yeah, so, so before, in case you didn't hear, for, when we were in the Old Testament, when we were looking from, you know, Genesis, where we left off, uh, second Samuel, you know, we were encountering a lot of numbers, especially like within the Torah, and a lot of those numbers were not exact. Some of those just could have been, you know, a little bit exaggerated, or just oft- Right, right. Or even getting into how they, like, what their number system looked like, which was the Hebrew alphabet. And we were talking about like, oh, well, does that aleph mean like a whole herd? Does that stand for one or one hundred? How many zeros are on the end of that? And so, yeah, there was a little bit, you know, it's not playing loose with the text. This is just, once again, we're not that target audience. This was written at a completely different time, and they had their own understanding of how those numbers worked. Now, I say that even to the days of creation, we have seven, we have a completeness there. Whether it happened in seven literal days or not, we talked about that before, but regardless, there is a completion to that number seven. Right? So there is symbolism in the Old Testament. It's not immune to that. But it happens because of a lot of those cultures. We don't really do that today. Um, I mean, honestly, I think the closest thing might be like the number thirteen, ooh, you know? But like, that's our own like superstition that's been handed down to us. Or Friday the thirteenth, or, you know, things like that. Six, 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 but we've read the context for like where that came from, you know, or lucky number seven. You know, so, so a lot of that does come back to scripture, but that's the only thing that we have within our own symbolism. We're just reading the source text for a lot of that. Right? Now, that being said, as we fast forward and we get into the New Testament, and we have, you know, not just a Hebrew, post-exile Hebrew influence, but we also have Greek influence in this too, and a Roman Latin influence all throughout. And so kind of a subversive nature against that, so some of this is written in code, like the six, 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 to be against. Right? Rome, the beast. But it also just so happens to be like this number of man, because it, it falls short of the completeness of seven. It's the antithesis of God's way in perfection, man's way of an imperfection. And so that symbolism is there, uh, but it's not necessarily... You do see much more of a precise numbering within Greek and Latin systems. And so, you know, what, where does that leave us? It's just an understanding at the first century text. Once again, not taking everything, like, not everything in here is written within the same context. Right? We have an ancient Near Eastern context, but even that spans thousands of years, and changes from period to period. I mean, just think about our own nation's history. How much has that context changed? We were just talking about rotary phones. Absolutely. Yep. Rough numbers versus intentional symbolism. So, but, you know, hear me out. There's still intentional symbolism in the Old Testament too. So... No, absolutely! Absolutely, yeah. It, David makes an excellent point, and I think we talked about this probably a year ago. Um, but, you know, we have, you know, what's being communicated in Greek to Hebrew speakers, Hebrew background, you know, members. And then you have Gentiles who are into this, who are not native Hebrew speakers, who are probably missing a lot of the Hebrew context for this. But it's getting explained to them by the Jews that they're in fellowship with. And, you know, to kind of ratchet that up a little bit, even for like the Greek words, for like lampstand, these native Hebrew speakers who also learn Greek are hearing that and immediately translating into menorah. Where we're thinking, oh, wow, what did that lampstand look like? No, they're thinking back to the Torah and the pattern that Yahweh gave to Moses in how to make a seven-branch menorah. So, you know, there's cultural background, religious background, and, you know, ethnic background, like all of these things, language backgrounds. So it's, yeah, there's layers here, and just peeling that back. But yeah, numbers is just another whole piece of that. So the question is, are the hundred and forty-four thousand, are we talking about men only? And the understanding here is that, so there's two understandings, that's actually where we're gonna go next, is because what we have is this understanding that this is all believers. So women are included in this. So women are included in this. We're also looking at what is going to be warfare. I don't know what made that sound, but that was perfect. So, so as we are. That was great. It's awesome. The, so here, let me, let's read on here. "And I heard a voice from heaven like the sound of many waters, and like the sound of loud thunder, and the voice which I heard was like the sound of harpist playing on their harps." So we're going to get to all of that in verse four, that we were just talking about, men, women, and even them being chased, right? Because that's an important piece to this as well. Oh, also, just from Keener, Mount Zion figures prominently in apocalyptic expectations. It appears by that title in Fourth Ezra and Second Baruch. Once again, apocryphal works, but still very influential at that time. Now here, the association of the 144,000 with Zion here may represent their role as new Jerusalemites, which kind of factors a little bit into what Mounts is talking about with the New Jerusalem. Remember the end of this book, how it comes out of heaven? So. Because Mount Zion would be a part of a New Jerusalem. So it's kind of an interesting little factor, even though that doesn't, you know, feature heavily towards the end of the book, it would still be a part of it. So that's why I kind of found like Mounts's observation or connection with that fascinating. It's like, oh, because you read the text, and like, mind you, this is all vision. And so it doesn't say like a Mount Zion in heaven. It just says Mount Zion. So you would assume that it's, you know, the one on the north side of Jerusalem. So separating that out, I think that was kind of interesting. So when we talk about the sounds that are being heard, we talked about this before, but the sound of many waters and like the sound of loud thunder. We have both featured heavily with Mount Sinai. When Yahweh speaks, it's thunder. That's what people hear. One of the commentators, I believe is actually Mount, separates. So when God separated the waters, that this whole idea of hearing the sound of many waters, instead of thinking of the ocean or, you know, lake or something like that, that he's attributing all of this to the heavens. So as the thunder is coming from the heavens, that the sound of the rushing or many waters is in the heavens as well. I thought that was kind of interesting, totally different than our current worldview. Right? But this is that firmament that's in heaven. That's just kind of how ancient Israel saw the earth. And I hear it's making a comeback. Okay, all right. So. Let me find here a few places. Okay. So Ezekiel, chapter one, verse 24. We'll chase down this rabbit trail, then we'll take a break. Ezekiel, chapter one. All right, verse 24. "I also heard the sound of their wings like the sound of abundant waters, as they went, like the voice of the Almighty, a sound of tumult, like the sound of an army camp. Whenever they stood still, they dropped their wings." So then Ezekiel, chapter 43, verse two. Starting at verse one, "Then he led me to the gate, the gate facing toward the east. And behold, the glory of the God of Israel was coming from the way of the east, and his voice was like the sound of many waters, and the earth shone with his glory." His voice was like the sound of many waters. Okay, then, talking about the sound of thunder, let's go to Exodus, chapter 19, verse 16. "So it came about on the third day, when it was morning, that there were, that there were thunder and lightning flashes, and a thick cloud upon the mountain, and a very loud trumpet sound, so that all the people who were in the camp trembled. And Moses brought the people out of the camp to meet God, and they stood at the foot of the mountain." Sorry, just had to read that one. That was crazy to think about. So. So there's a few things from this verse to remember for Revelation 14. Not just the thunder and lightning flashes, but also the thick cloud upon the mountain. And we'll read a few more places where that thick cloud appears. Because it's usually pretty disruptive. Okay, so that is, so what we have here is the voice from heaven, the sound of many waters, and like the sound of loud thunder. "And the voice which I heard was like the sound of harpist playing on their harps." So you have many waters, thunder, and harpist, many harpist playing. So if you ever hear a sound like all of those things combined, just fall on your face. That's just the safest thing to do at that moment, just fall straight down. Okay. So here we are. We just got in talking about the voice of God. Right? So we have the sound of many waters, the thunder, and harpist. And verse three, "And they sang a new song before the throne and before the four living creatures." So this is also what gives a little bit more credibility to what Mounts thinks of Mount Zion being in heaven. Because this is right in front of the throne. So they sing this, sing a new song before the throne and before the four living creatures and the elders. "And no one could learn the song except the 144,000, who had been purchased from the earth." So this wasn't just of a certain people group. This wasn't of just a certain time. This is purchased from the earth. So mind you, we're transitioning now into like harvest language, right? So think of the geographic scope of the earth. And so, no, I mean, it's, it's a good question, because as we're talking about, so with the idea that the 144,000 is every believer, and as Jesus is talking through some of this, it's like, oh, you know, hey, that's a fun connection, especially if we kind of go along with the idea that Revelation seven, we see 144,000. 14, there's 144,000, not 139, you know, 143,999. Oh no, he lost one. But then elsewhere, we see Jesus saying, I've not lost one. That you gave me, right. So. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think, I think that would theologically check out. Now, what does it mean that, you know, the Father has given them to him? What does that look like, especially with some of the concepts of election? So. And I think I talked about election in here before, where there is Jesus the way, and by there being a way, there are other paths that are not. Right? And the piece of this is that by creating the way, that that is the opportunity for one to choose who they are going to belong to. But you will belong to one of those. No, that was good. That was a good connection. Actually, all of those verses from John, I think, were completely relevant, so. No, and, you know, and listen, like, I mean, as we're talking about this, like, that's kind of the synthesis. Synthesis, synthesis, thank you. That, you know, I love to see is like as we're thinking about other pieces of the text. I kind of started off with that, with 144,000, and go into Romans eight through 11, Ephesians two. It's like, oh, wait a second, this isn't a new concept. Right? So just kind of connecting all of those dots. All right, so. Here we are, let's see, verse three. "So they're singing a new song. No one could learn the song except the 144,000, who had been purchased from the earth." So this is a song that does not belong to angels of any kind, to cherubim, to seraphim, to anything else under heaven, except for the 144,000. Those who have been purchased by the blood of Christ. "These are the ones," verse four, "who have not been defiled with women, for they have kept themselves chaste. These are the ones who follow the Lamb wherever he goes. These have been purchased from among men, as first fruits to God and to the Lamb." So, once again, actually, let me just throw this out there as an early church history heresy, modalism, where there's only one God, and he just shows up in different forms. So when Jesus was walking the earth, heaven was empty. Jesus transforms into the Holy Spirit, indwelling us. And still, at some point, heaven's still empty. It's, it's a ridiculous heresy. And so just to understand, and so like just to appreciate when we see the fruits, first fruits to God and to the Lamb. Right? How many times do we see the Father and the Son appearing side by side? So it's, I mean, it's just something to notice and not gloss over. I mean, just to think about this, like, take the description earlier of, you know, the Father on the throne and the Lamb right next to him. And you don't have to picture a nice, snow white little lamb. Like imagine Jesus. Right? Or Yeshua. So. But once again, you know, there is plenty of imagery here, and that is completely what it elicits is that the Lamb, the Lamb of God. I mean, think about it. Especially with what comes later in this chapter, we're not reading about a lion. Which, the lion of the tribe of Judah, that's part of his title, but that's not how he has been portrayed through any of this, even as the conquering king, a few chapters back. He's still the Lamb. So here, in verse four. And so we were talking about the whole idea of those not being defiled with women. They have kept themselves chaste. So the Greek term translated virgin here, this is from Keener, is hardly ever applied to men in Greek literature. And he includes, perhaps partly because men in ancient Greek culture rarely were. But it means never having had sex with someone of the opposite gender, and hence includes not being married. In a literal sense, this virginity was practiced most often among a Jewish group known as the Essenes. So think Dead Sea Scrolls. Now, "But the image here may here allude symbolically to the purity of priest for the temple service." Let's go to Leviticus, chapter 15. Leviticus 15, verses 16 through 18. Not that I'm excited about reading this one, but just so we understand, like, the necessity. "Now if a man has a seminal omission, he shall bathe all his body in water and be unclean until evening. As for any garment or leather on which there is seminal omission, it shall be washed with water and be unclean until evening. If a man lies with a woman so that there is a seminal omission, they shall both bathe in water and be unclean until evening." This isn't happening if somebody's working in the temple. This isn't happening if there is direct service to Yahweh in his presence. There was even requirements for such as at the foot of Mount Sinai. So. It's interesting here that we have this piece. Now, here's the other thing, "or to the purity required by the rules of spiritual holy war." So Deuteronomy, chapter 23. So we have priest service and also the rules going into battle. Deuteronomy 23, starting at verse nine. "When you go out as an army against your enemies, you shall keep yourself from every evil thing. If there is among you any man who is unclean because of a nocturnal omission, then he must go outside the camp; he may not re-enter the camp. But it shall be, when evening approaches, he shall bathe himself with water, and at sundown, he may re-enter the camp." First Samuel, chapter two. So this is completely a thing in ancient Israelite warfare. First Samuel, chapter 21. Verse five. "David answered the priests and said to him, 'Surely women have been kept from us as previously, when I set out, and the vessels of the young men were holy, though it was an ordinary journey. How much more than today will their vessels be holy?'" So they have abstained. And so that being connected with holiness, let's go to Second Samuel, chapter 11. Verse 11. "Uriah said to David, 'The ark, and Israel, and Judah are staying in temporary shelters, and my lord Joab and the servant of my lord are camping in the open field. Shall I then go to my house to eat and to drink and to lie with my wife? By your life and the life of your soul, I will not do this thing.'" So this was ancient Israelite practice. That from the Torah, following those instructions, that when they were going and making war, then when they were going into battle against these pagan tribes, they abstained from sexual relations. Now what we see, actually, let me continue reading this note from Keener. This also is included in the Qumran War Scroll, once, once again, going back to the Essenes. So that's an interesting connection. "The latter suggestion would fit the possible military census that some commentators find in Revelation seven, four through eight." So in Revelation seven, when it talks about the 144,000, and it goes through each tribe, we just, you know, we read through the numbers, and we're just like, oh, okay. Like, I thought we got past this in the Old Testament, right? Like, because when did we see that? In Numbers. Also in Exodus. Why did we see it there? It was the number of people that were of age to go to battle. So in Revelation seven, we have the same thing, because, I think that's what some of you guys were saying, this was the army. These were the guys, this was for military service. And so that seems to be like validated or affirmed with the whole idea that they were abstaining, they were chaste. Now, mind you, this is symbolic. Because, you know, we actually don't see that battle happening. So what is the bigger point? So let me, given the link to Zion, "Their chastity may also be a male version of that, of the image of the New Jerusalem as a bride, in contrast to Babylon the prostitute." in contrast to Babylon the prostitute." So everything that we're reading here is completely, just like the last chapter, with the unholy trinity, this is all kind of on the flip side of the evil that we're either read about or going to read about. So these, this 144,000 have been devoted to the Lord. They have not prostituted themselves by worshiping the world or anything in it. And this is how they do battle. Is by staying committed to the Lamb. Right? Or have we? So, because, let me unpack that. So because the whole idea is that that chastity is towards the world. That we have not bowed down to the systems of the world, think of the sea beast and the earth beast and those things. Because that, remember, that mark on their forehead is held in contrast to the mark on the worshippers of the beast. That's the chastity that's being talked about here. It's a spiritual thing, absolutely. Right? Which for all those 144,000, you know, guys that thought they belonged to the 144,000, never mind, just stop there. So. All for nothing. That's right, we can edit this. So, but the whole idea here is that, like, there's a commitment to the Lamb. That's why they're standing with him, that's why from chapters, somebody got it, from chapter seven to 14, like, nobody's been lost. And as we're getting into the fulfillment of these things, I mean, like, we're gonna, we're getting to the doom for the worshippers of the beast. What we read here in chapter, in verse four of chapter 14, that these don't belong to that group. That their chastity is a validation that they have not worshipped the beast, the dragon, the beast, or anything else of the world. They've not fallen into those systems. They've not accepted a mark, they've not compromised their loyalty, their allegiance to the Lamb to continue with daily commerce. Even to the point of giving up their lives. And that's why I say that many of, you know, the 144,000 are going to be found underneath the altar. So, so this, I mean, you could talk about the book of Revelation as unpacking what allegiance looks like. What allegiance to the world looks like and allegiance to the Lamb. That is what is being talked about here. And in case you're thinking, like, hey, wait a second, like, let's just take a plain reading of the text, well, I hate to break it to you, but, you know, Peter had kids. James had kids. I mean, if you really want to be technical, like, Mary had kids. Boy, break that one to some Catholics. She ain't part of the 144,000. So, so that's why, like, as we're talking about this, I mean, you know, we could go through a whole bunch of lists of names, but like, that's why we're taking this in a spiritual and symbolic way. Is that there's a deeper meaning here. And by the way, if Jesus wants to, like, pick out 144,000, none of us are going to argue about it. I'll reserve that, that level of, like, I could totally be wrong. And so, but as we are taking all of the text, like, this is what fits. This is the understanding, right? Because this isn't something that goes against God's command to be fruitful and multiply. What we're seeing here is the juxtaposition between allegiance to the Lamb and what we're about to read with allegiance to the beast. And what happens after that. What, like, what, where do the end of those two roads, where do they meet? Or where do they end up? So. Yeah, so I really did appreciate what Keener was bringing to that. Mounts also agrees. Just a little bit more wordy, but. So as we get into verse five, any questions on that? "So these are the ones who follow the Lamb wherever he goes. These have been purchased from among men as first fruits to God and to the Lamb." So, once again, the first fruits, we see Jesus being referred to as first fruits by Paul, first fruits of the resurrection. Just saved in general. Yep, yeah, this isn't special. Yep. Now, Paul will draw a distinction, and, you know, in 1 Corinthians 15, those who participate in the first resurrection. So. There you go. What's that? So people interpret that as being, like, participating in the millennial reign of Christ. So when Jesus comes back, like, those basically chosen to come back to life in the first resurrection will rule and reign with him for a thousand years. Then at the end of that, when Satan is let loose and stirs up the nations against the Lamb, God says, okay, that's enough. And, this is totally Luke's version of this, by the way. I encourage you to read 1 Corinthians 15 yourself. But then at that point, is the resurrection of everybody. And many think the great white throne judgment after that. So. There's a whole spectrum of belief on absolutely every point that I just said. So, yes. No, so what is, because there's not even a resurrection in view, that's why the symbolism of this, that's why, like, the weight of interpretation is more towards the symbolism of it. Basically, they're going to be with him forevermore. So, yep. "And no lie was found in their mouth; they are blameless." So the promise in time remnant would have no lie in their mouth, Zephaniah, chapter three, verse 13. "Truth-telling was important in ancient ethics, although it could be suspended even in the Bible to save life." That's from Keener. Exodus chap, that's not Luke Erb, that is Keener. And so Craig Keener, Exodus, chapter one, verses 19 through 20, Jeremiah, chapter 38, verse 25 through 27. So, some interesting ones there. "So contrast to those who will forever be excluded from the eternal city, evil people of every sort, and everyone who loves and practices falsehood," as we'll read in Revelation 22, verse 15. "It can be said of the redeemed that no lie was found in their mouths. Unlike the pagan world that exchanged the truth of God for a lie," Romans, chapter one, verse 25. "They made no compromise with the heretical claims of the Antichrist." "Zephaniah had prophesied that the remnant of Israel would speak no lies, nor would deceit be found in their mouths." And that's Zephaniah, chapter three, verse 13. "So the 144,000 are also beyond the reach of blame." When used of New Testament believers, the Greek word uniformly means ethically blameless. Ethically blameless. So you can put that on the mirror every morning, or write it on your hand. Ethically blameless. "Since the theme of sacrifice is present in the immediate context, a number of writers are of the opinion that the word should here be taken in the ritual sense of sacrificially acceptable." That's a fun, like, little level to this. This is the meaning of the word when used of Christ, the Passover Lamb, in 1 Peter, chapter one, verse 19. So blameless. That's what we're talking, like, spotless, right? Ethically, you know, blameless, like, so we are living these things out. But it's also the blood of Christ that covers us. That's right, that's right, amen, amen. No, absolutely. And, you know, and that's why, like, as we talk about this, you know, like, I know, we're laughing, it's a joke, but, you know, like, like, it's the blood of Christ, knowing that it makes us spotless should inspire us to live blameless lives. Like, that's how this should work if we see it as a credit card for sin. You know, just running it up, that's not how this works at all. And you can read Hebrews six on that one. And so that's, and, you know, and. Yeah, like, just, we have to have that much love and appreciation for the sacrifice of Christ. To die to ourselves, that's what that means. Because in and of ourselves, we don't want to be ethically blameless. We are in this for ourselves. And we will compromise all kinds of things to get ourselves ahead. But we don't live for ourselves, we live for Christ. And it's the blood of Christ that provides the motivation for us to die to ourselves, because he already died for us, so that we can represent him well. So. Thanks, Jim. Oh, man. Next time, you're gonna be sitting in the back, aren't you? Oh, my goodness. Oh, boy. So the vision of the Lamb and the 144,000 on Mount Zion, this is from Mounts, "Following as it does the distressing visions of the two satanic beasts brings a surge of spirited expectation. As difficult as the future may be, there remains the joyful prospect of soon standing beyond this sphere of suffering on the mountain of the Lord, and singing with the innumerable multitude of the redeemed the new song of salvation." Visions of what will be strengthened, visions of what will be strengthened the believer to endure the reality of what for the present must be." So remember, John's writing to a group of churches, that some of which were enduring persecution. They were also enduring those who were living with allegiance to the beast. Within their fellowship. Or the teachings of Jezebel. Or, right, all of which kind of wrapped up in the systems of the beast. So. So, you know, just kind of bringing that home, that immorality. And just seeing that as, that's not allegiance to the Lamb, that's allegiance to the beast. So. All right, we've got a couple minutes, all right. All right, let's, let's at least read through six, actually, does anybody have any questions? Okay, six through eight. "And I saw another angel flying in mid-heaven, having an eternal gospel to preach to those who live on the earth and to every nation and tribe and tongue and people. And he said with a loud voice, Fear God and give him glory, because the hour of his judgment has come. Worship him, who made the heaven and the earth and sea and springs of waters. And another angel, a second one, followed, saying, Fallen, fallen is Babylon the great, she who has made all the nations drink of the wine of the passion of her immorality." So verse six. So the angel's good news here, gospel, translated, good news, is the vindication of God's people by judgment on the wicked. So it's a little bit of a different gospel than what we think of it to be, but I would contend it's actually a more fuller understanding of the gospel of Jesus Christ. This is what we mean by Jesus is Lord. Not just that he is Savior, but that he is Lord. This is part of it. This whole aspect of judgment is part of that. When we read in chapter 11, the seventh trumpet, "Then the seventh angel sounded, and there were loud voices in heaven, saying, The kingdom of the world, right, the beast system, has become the kingdom of our Lord and of his Christ, his Messiah, and he will reign forever and ever. And the twenty-four elders who sit on their thrones before God fell on their faces and worshipped God, saying, We give you thanks, O Lord God, the Almighty, who are and who were, because you have taken your great power and have begun to reign. And the nations were enraged, and your wrath came, and the time came for the dead to be judged, and the time to reward your bond servants, the prophets, and the saints, or holy ones, and those who fear your name, the small and the great, and to destroy those who destroyed the earth. And the temple of God, which is in heaven, was opened, and the ark of his covenant appeared in his temple. And there were flashes of lightning, and sounds, and peals of thunder, and an earthquake, and a great hailstorm." So this is the lordship of Christ. So this is part of the gospel, the good news. Because the activity of angels in heaven often corresponds to what happens on earth. However, chapter seven, 12, verse seven, "Some commentators have suggested that this picture may refer to the final proclamation of the good news of the kingdom, including both salvation and vindication slash judgment preceding the end." Matthew 24, 14, for reference. Matthew 24, 14, "This gospel of the kingdom shall be preached in the whole world as a testimony to all the nations, and then the end will come." That's a fun little connection to Revelation 14, right? So the next time you're reading through this and you come across that, think of Revelation. And, you know, remember, same Jesus, Yahshua, that was saying that, as Matthew recorded it, is also the one that's present in this vision. I wanted to, so is this saying, thanks, thanks, David. Is this saying that, like, is this giving somebody a last chance? Or is this literally just, hey, this is what's happening, guys, here's what's coming to you? I want it to be that it's a last chance, that there were maybe some who had not committed to the Lamb, and some who maybe just for one reason or another had rebelled against the systems of the world. And that this was a chance to hear the gospel and believe. I want, I want that to be a part of it in this, in the line of thought, like, of what happens, it seems like it's a proclamation of judgment. As we've already seen, the 144,000. Now, if there was a verse that came in, like, between eight and nine and said, and then there was 144,001. But, you know, like, you want it to be that. But I think with the judgment that comes right after that section, like, this is an angel proclaiming the lordship of Christ. And here's why you're all, you're all about to die. Well, so, okay, oh, boy. We might have to, like, start here next time, but no, 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 don't apologize, this is great, because, like, all throughout this, like, to understand, here we are. here we are 2,000 years later of church history and interpretation of the text and reading certain perspectives. Like, you know, there's a certain approach that we have taken and even just kind of pulling from different perspectives, but there's a general approach that we have adopted, or I have, as we're moving through this. Some people are just more concerned of, like, hey, wait a second. Luke, if you're saying that they're on Mount Zion, but that's a Mount Zion from Hebrews 12, or, you know, that they're in heaven, does that mean they're all dead? And so then the only people left are the ones allegiance to the beast. But that's not in view here. That's, that's not the point of the text. We're reading into it because we're so concerned about life and death, and really more concerned about living and not dying. But what John's concerned about, what John's receiving and passing on to others, is that they're with the Lamb. It doesn't matter if they're alive or dead. Death is irrelevant if you're with the Lamb. Let that one sink in. The locusts were a gentle reminder, that's right. That's, that's exactly, like, as we've read all the way up to this point, there has been warning after warning not to be a part of this system. And, and this is the proclamation of the lordship of Christ, that judgment has come. The reclaiming of the earth, and it's only going to go bad from here. But at the same time, you look ahead to 15, there's rejoicing in heaven. So, you know, when we are approaching this, like, it's at these moments that we have to remind ourselves of a persecuted church that was hearing this. Who was thinking of the loved ones that weren't a part of their fellowship. But they were also at the same time thinking of other loved ones that had already maybe been martyred or thrown in jail for the cause of Christ. So. And that, the ultimate rejoicing is that everybody will be at the Lamb. Everyone committed to the Lamb will be with the Lamb. And they, wherever he goes, they will go to. So, we'll end on that note. Thank you, guys, for being a part of this, and we will pick up with verse six. Continuing to unpack that next week, so, all right, God bless.